So we'll call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everyone to our January 8th, 2025 school board meeting at the Jefferson Early Childhood Education Center. Ms. Hutchinson, could you please call the roll for us?
Ms. Blatner.
Here.
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 And for our pledge of allegiance today, Dr. Mary Davis, can you and your Jefferson
students lead us in our pledge, please? Thank you so much, students. That was very good. Before we do our host school introduction, I just want to take a moment of silence to start our meeting. When we experience the death of a student in our student community, the impact is felt by the entire District 200 community. And we ask that you keep our students' family, friends, and the entire Wheaton North community in your thoughts as we all cope with this incredible loss. Please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. Dr. Schuler, can you please introduce Dr. Mary Davis, the principal of Jefferson?
Absolutely. So it is my pleasure to introduce Mary. Mary is an incredibly talented principal and leader, has been a leader in our system for a little while. And obviously, if you spent even five minutes, and I know most of you spent more than that out in the lobby, you see the incredible work that happens at this building. It takes an integrated team to make that happen, but an important part of that is the leader. So, Mary, like yours.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Good evening, Jefferson friends. My name is Dr. Mary Davis, and I am the proud principal of Jefferson Early Childhood Center. It's a pleasure to welcome you all to our school and to host tonight's board meeting. Before I provide an update on all things Jefferson, I do just want to thank the students who came up to do the pledge of allegiance. I thought that was very brave and very well done. So, thank you, friends. Since the last meeting we hosted back in 2022, that was my first year here as principal, we've been hard at work cultivating a vibrant and inclusive learning environment utilizing our stakeholder-created Jefferson vision, mission, and beliefs to guide our way. For the last two school years, our theme has been, you'll see it on our staff members' shirts as well, reflecting our commitment to building a community where every student and every staff member feels valued and empowered to succeed. This commitment is evident in our diverse student body, with 32 languages spoken by our students and their families here at Jefferson. Additionally, we've made significant strides in including our students with disabilities in our blended classrooms, with recent data from the Illinois State Board of Education showing a 20% increase since 2022. We now exceed the state target by way of numbers and our actions and beliefs, not to mention the dozens of student success stories we could share with you daily. There's just amazing stuff going on in our classrooms every day. Our students are learning to be helpers, teachers, and leaders. They are learning to embrace differences, have empathy, to include others, and simply put, to be kind humans. A cornerstone of our success has been the development of our robust Tier One instructional and social-emotional learning frameworks. These frameworks ensure each Jefferson Jet has access to high-quality instruction and the supportive environment they need to succeed. Our Tier One instructional framework emphasizes intentional teaching, engaging learning centers, which some of you got to experience tonight, language-rich environments, positive homeschool connections, and of course, alignment to the state standards in District 200 kindergarten curriculum. Our Tier One SEL behavioral framework emphasizes school-wide guidelines for success, positive interactions, supportive classroom environments, clear expectations, explicit teaching of SEL skills, and active supervision with feedback. To experience firsthand how our students engage in learning here at Jefferson, we invited the community to join us before tonight's meeting, to participate in hands-on learning activities just like our little learners do each and every day here at Jefferson. So you can see in our presentation, tonight, Dr. Schuler was at our dramatic play center, which was our Starbucks Cafe tonight. He was practicing his social skills, his language development, his math, and his creativity with friends. But he was not alone. Tonight, Mrs. Kulevitz was at the sensory table and science table, where she was using a variety of tools to develop her fine motor skills while learning about the scientific concept of melting ice. You did a great job there. Dr. Salagi, we saw you as well. You were at the math center, using Play-Doh to work on numeral identification and counting while building hand strength, which will really help with your future writing tasks when you get to elementary school. Mr. Jerpy was reading at the reading center. He was working on sequencing a story with props, very well done as well. And don't forget, Mr. Paulson, he was at the lightbox, exploring colors, shapes, and matching concepts with various translucent materials. All of these centers provide rich opportunities for our learners. Tonight, our learners were both young and experienced learners. They were working to develop and practice essential kindergarten readiness skills in a developmentally appropriate, playful, and engaging manner, which is important for our children, and our community knows it too. I'm pleased to report that our enrollment is growing here at Jefferson. We are fortunate to have this beautiful building and a positive reputation within the community, as well as the support of our families. We see our families as partners here at Jefferson, and their support of our schools makes it 10,000 times easier for us to do our best work for their children. It truly is a partnership here. A big thanks to our PTA, who provided the yummy treats tonight. Make sure you grab something to eat. But in addition to giving us yummy treats, they also enhance our school experience here at Jefferson by offering various enrichment activities for our students, staff, and families. Speaking of the student experience, or speaking of the experience at Jefferson, our recent staff morale data and five essential survey data demonstrates a very strong and positive school culture. These findings reflect the dedication and hard work of our staff and the positive environment we have cultivated together over the last couple of years. We were also just recently awarded the Gold Circle of Quality designation, which is the highest ranking given by Accelerate Illinois, the state's recognition system for early childhood. Gold Circle programs have met the highest quality standards in three areas, including learning environment and teaching quality, administrative standards, and training and education. We're very proud of this designation. And of course, none of this could be possible without the staff here at Jefferson. Our staff consistently go above and beyond, demonstrating unwavering commitment to our students and families. I would like to take a moment to recognize these individuals behind me. They are the true magic makers here at Jefferson, and our school and district just would not be the same without them. So if you are a Jefferson staff member, please stand up to be honored tonight. I have one more fun fact for you. Did you know that 25% of our staff don't just work here, but they also chose Jefferson as their child's first school experience here in District 200? We just ran the numbers, and 25%, I think is an incredibly high number. I can't imagine that that is evident anywhere else. But I think this high number really demonstrates the pride and belief we have in what we do here, and no doubt adds something else special here to Jefferson. So to close, I would like to thank you for your continued support of Jefferson. Your belief in early education does not go unnoticed. To help you remember tonight and to thank you for all that you do, our students created magnets for you to keep. Each magnet says, "Play is our brain's favorite way of learning," and we hope you enjoyed your playful learning experience with us tonight. Thank you. So if you are a Jefferson Jet and you are willing to come up here and help me pass these out, we've got all these people up here that would love one of your pieces of art. Please come on up and help me pass them out, okay? All right, go find somebody up here that doesn't have one yet.
Thank you very much. Just one.
Thank you so much. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis and your students. It was so much fun playing with everyone before our board meeting today. All right, next we will move on to public comment. We have one person signed up for public comment. Before starting public comment, I just want to thank those signing up for public comment for taking the time to share their feedback and their thoughtful focus on our students, our school district, and our community. It is the board's practice to not directly discuss communications from the community until the context is understood and information explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2-230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce the time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board does ask that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it is important that we treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's all work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and whether you're a resident of the district. And to ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Mr. Long will raise his hand when 15 seconds remains as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I would respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting and sharing your thoughts and encouragement for our district. Our first speaker is Stephanie Zentner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Zentner, and I am one of the teachers here at Jefferson and a proud member of the Wheaton-Warranville Education Association. When people ask me why I love working at Jefferson, my answer is simple. It's the joy, the purpose, and the opportunity to make a difference in young lives every single day. Jefferson truly is a magical place. It's where tiny hands discover big ideas, where imaginations run wild, and where curiosity is celebrated. Every day, I walk into my classroom, and it's filled with lots of energy, laughter, and the excitement of children learning something new for the very first time. What I love most about working here are the relationships I get to build with my students, my families, and my colleagues. I get to witness them learn and grow, whether it's something as simple as writing their name for the first time or mastering the art of sharing a toy. These moments may seem small, but to a preschooler, they truly are everything. I also really do enjoy inviting parents to come into my classroom and be a mystery reader. Like, the joy on those children's face when they see their parent walk through the door is literally priceless. Working at Jefferson also means you are part of a community, connecting with families, collaborating with colleagues, and celebrating the unique process of every child. It's a place where you're constantly reminded of the power of teamwork, the importance of patience, and the strength of love and support in helping children thrive. It's also so incredibly rewarding to see the impact we have on children as educators. In preschool, I promise, we don't just teach colors and shapes and numbers. We teach kindness, patience, and confidence. We help lay the foundation for a lifetime of learning, and I know that playing a role in shaping their future really brings me joy. But honestly, the children teach me just as much as I teach them. They remind me to find the wonder in the little things, to approach challenges with determination, and to see the world with fresh eyes every day. So why do I love working here? Because it's more than just a job. It's rewarding and a source of joy. Thank you.
All right. Next up on our agenda, we have the superintendent report. Dr. Schuler, do you have any topics to report to the board at this time?
I do. So I'm going to start my superintendent report this evening, actually continuing something we started at the last meeting. So I think the board is aware, community is aware, that we've spent a lot of time this year focused on our pathways work over the last couple of years. And so we think it's important to continue to recognize community members and partners that are a part of that. So the recognition and story for tonight kind of has its origin, I think, back in like 2016. I seem to remember, it was about 2016, that a community member, Jay, reached out and said, "Hey, can we get together? I have an idea that I'm interested in seeing if District 200 would be willing to be a part of." And I had heard a little bit about Business Incubator from a colleague, but so, is my time up? So I got together with Jay over lunch, and Jay had been working with, I think through work, with the Business Incubator program in another district, and just said, "I really want this as an opportunity for my kids, for the kids in District 200." And so out of that conversation grew kind of a group of people that he helped to bring together and that the district brought together. And in the 2017-18 school year, our first sections of Business Incubator are launched. I asked Mr. Smith to run a couple of numbers for me, and since 2017-18, we've run 34 sections of the Business Incubator program. We've had 724 students go through that program and have what I know for many of those students was really an education-changing, life-changing experience. We have had countless community members that have come in, participated in the program as mentors, as coaches, as guides for our students. We've had students that have won local pitch competitions, won statewide pitch competitions. It truly, in that pathways space, has been a life-altering experience for kids. And so it's my pleasure this evening, as we continue this recognition, to ask Jay, and I'm going to ask Ian to join him up at the podium, so that we can recognize him for that first reach out back in 2016, where he said, "Hey, I have an idea," and out of that idea, we've impacted 724 students in District 200. So Jay, Ian, would you mind coming up? Ian, who's been really involved, I wanted to just kind of two quick anecdotes. I'm going to ask Ian to just offer his perspective on kind of impact of incubator, and then I'm going to ask Max to actually do the same thing, based on an interview he's done, so.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Yes, from the very beginning, as you mentioned, Mr. Os has been in a role, probably our biggest, I would say for sure, our biggest community cheerleader and supporter from the very beginning. And as you mentioned, there's so many different roles that we do rely on community members to fulfill, to make Business Incubator successful. So you've got our Board of Directors, which he's served on and has overseen that, our Sharks that judge all the competitions, the mentors, the coaches that work with students every day in the classroom. And Jay has served in all those roles and given very generously of his time and his resources to make the program successful. But even beyond that, whenever we've needed anything over the years, he's the person that we call, just to bounce ideas off of. He's got a lot of wisdom, a lot of insight, as you said, all kinds of connections in the community, more partners. This year is our biggest year yet with Business Incubator. We have 150 students, six sections, and so that meant a lot more partners, a lot more coaches, a lot more mentors are needed. So Jay had an event at his house last spring, so we could do some more recruiting. And just again, every step of the way, he's been that person. And not only that, he's been a good friend for all of us, the teachers, myself, and all the other people involved. So Jay, it's really an honor to recognize you tonight.
And then Max, so I know you haven't taken the Business Incubator class, but you had a little opportunity to do a mini project for Mrs. Murphy, and can you just talk a little bit about that experience?
All right. Sorry about that. Yeah, so I had the opportunity to interview a senior, Addie Wazak, and it was a great conversation. Overall, she said that it was an inspiring class, a great sandbox to express creativity, and a great place to build teamwork skills. Her biggest takeaway was the guest speakers who came in to talk and getting to hear their stories and their experiences. She spoke so highly, just all around about the class, that I was getting really jealous of her, that I didn't take the class. But in all seriousness, I just want to extend a heartfelt thank you to you for her experiences and all the students that have gone through the Business Incubator class. So thank you.
Jay, I didn't prompt you with this, but anything you want to offer?
No, I mean, other than just selfishly, you know, this program has been awesome for me, and I think it's a cool opportunity for students. You know, we don't want to push them to become adults any faster than they're otherwise going to, but I think it gives them exposure so that when they reach certain points in interviewing or their career or their college, I think it is a separation point from the pack. And I've gotten amazing feedback, so yeah, thanks for sharing some additional, I appreciate it.
So Jay, we have a little recognition and thank you on behalf of the district. Just three more quick updates for the board under my report. One in your green folders, a copy of an invitation to an event that Mr. Spencer and his team have been preparing January 29th. We are hosting a community session on AI, just helping to build a little bit of capacity and understanding around AI, potential connections to future of learning and education. So we've been pushing this out, but certainly board members and community members, I want to make sure you know you're welcome to that. Second, I just want to offer a thank you and a recognition to a teacher at Franklin, Amanda Yost. So the Daily Herald did a feature on Amanda that I think we saw a little bit earlier today as a part of a feature they're doing on educators. Amanda's a really talented, multilingual teacher. I had a chance to visit her classroom a year ago to see some of the math-language routines that she has in place, and phenomenal teacher. It was a great representation of District 200, so thank you to Amanda. Thank you to Alyssa for kind of helping to build that bridge with the Herald to recognize her. And then finally, I want to let board members know, I think in your folders as well, this evening, you have an invitation from the Wheaton Park District to an annual event that they have for community partners every year in February. So please make sure you take a look at that invitation, and if you can join, please do. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our student ambassadors for their reports.
All righty, I'm back on the mic. So first off, we welcomed our new principal advisory committee. So this is something we've been working on for a little bit. It's basically representative, so student representatives from the freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior classes who applied, and they're giving, it's during their lunch hours. They're giving feedback on various topics, so it could be school-wide or topics that the board specifically is interested in. So at our first meeting yesterday, we talked about the phone policy and then kind of ins and outs of that to prepare for the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and then I'm sure, yeah, we'll get you guys that information too. And then also, next, we, I know we just kind of talked about it too. We interviewed students from career developmental courses at South for feedback. I know I kind of mentioned one of them, but all ambassadors interviewed, right? From North too? Yep. And then 96% of students passed all of their classes this year, so that's great numbers. And then we, after a bunch of stress, we wrapped up our first semester finals, and then despite being a little sleepy, we're starting our second semester strong. So good news out of South.
All righty. So our spring musical, which is going to be Mean Girls this year, will be casting at the end of this month, which is very exciting, as many of those that are in, is the mic? Okay, thank you. Many of those that are in the theater program at South have been advocating since, I know for sure since I was a freshman, for this to be a musical, so this is four years of progress here. Our choir classes brought some joy as we were preparing for finals by caroling for the classes that signed up for it, and we raised a total of $6,011.42, don't forget the .42, from our Tiger Drive, and we had an amazing assembly with a show from the Shy City tumblers. As for sports, our basketball teams, both girls and boys varsity, went down to Bloomington, Illinois for the State Farm Holiday Classic. Our boys team placed ninth and girls placed 10th. Esports Fortnite player, Austin Mullisack, one state, so that makes South back-to-back, two-back, three-time state champions in Fortnite. And Austin and Coach Brennan have been invited to attend the next board meeting. Luca Carbonaro, a senior on our varsity boys basketball team, scored his 1,000th point, and both girls and boys varsity won against Wheaton North. So similar to South, we are just getting back on our feet after winter break. Everyone is tired, and clearly, I'm the only one here. Luke is sick, and then Abby had rehearsal. So winter break took its toll on people tonight, but we had the final exam cram, which was really successful, as students prepared for finals before winter break. And then right before we left for break, since it was Christmas time and the holidays, we had Elf on the Shelf, where Mr. Corn Toyer went around like the entire school, and he would get like on the vending machine or on the ceiling and like throw candy and pass out candy to students to get them motivated for finals. So that was really fun. If you follow the Falcon Instagram, you get to see him on the roof and like passing candy to students, so that was really fun. And it's also time for Lit Fest, where students can submit its writing or like creative works in order to be recognized. And then we also have our spring musical auditions, and then the holiday concert coming up, or the holiday concert passed, this
up or the holiday concert pass, the spring musical auditions are coming up, my bad. And then the speech team took on Coal City right before winter break. And then this weekend, they're going to Glenbard West. And then for athletics, the girls' basketball team hosted the 40th Annual Neb's Gym Holiday Tournament. And then they won the consolidation championship and senior Sarah Abdul became the all-time leading scorer in Wheaton North girls' basketball history. So we're really proud of her and she made the new record, so that's really fun.
Thank you very much, student ambassadors. Next, we have our consent agenda. The items included in the consent agenda are, one, acceptance of gift to Wheaton Warrenville South High School extracurricular programs. Two, approval of athletic trainer services contract extension. Three, approval of mileage reimbursement rate for calendar year 2025. Four, approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable interfund loan from working fund, from working cash fund to operations and maintenance fund. Five, adoption of the resolution to begin the 2025, 2026 FY '26 budget cycle. Six, approval of dispose of operations and maintenance surplus assets. Seven, approval of bills payable and payroll. Eight, approval of minutes, December 7th, 2024, coffee with the board open, December 11th, 2024, regular meeting open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to August 2023 as allowable by law. Nine, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified and non-union staff. Board, are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, do you have any additional information for the board at this time?
None other than thank you. There was one gift that you're accepting through the consent agenda. Always like to call those out and thank the generosity of the community.
Board, are there any questions or comments? Then I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. All right, moved by Mr. Jerpy, seconded by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item in our agenda is the facilities approval consent agenda. The items included in the facilities consent agenda are, number one, approval of construction management agreement between CUSD 200 and Nicholas and Associates. And two, acceptance of summer 2025 playground bid proposals, which include the following. First, based on the submitted bid and bid review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to renovate the playgrounds at Weasbrooke Elementary and Whittier Elementary Schools in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $387,955.60. Two, based on the alternate number one bid submission and review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to relocate the existing Gaga pit on a new concrete pad around the playground area at Weasbrooke Elementary in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $23,125. Based on the alternate number two bid submission and review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to install a new second Gaga pit, concrete pad at Weasbrooke Elementary in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $19,965. Based on the alternate number three bid submission and review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to build a new concrete bike pad and purchase, install two bike racks at Whittier Elementary in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $7,615. Based on the alternate number four bid submission and review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to relocate the existing Gaga pit on a new concrete pad around the playground area at Whittier Elementary in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $11,155. Based on the alternate number five bid submission and review, the hiring of E. Hoffman, Inc. of Lombard, Illinois to build a new concrete pad and relocate, install an existing bench at Whittier Elementary in the summer of 2025 for the total amount of $2,015. And last, the direct purchase of all playground equipment and additional safety surfacing by the CUSD 200 business office. Board, are there any items board members want removed from the facilities approval consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, do you have any additional information for the board at this time?
There wasn't a facilities committee meeting, so there's not a committee report, but I know both playground piece and, and the construction management agreement was something we had talked about previously. So one, I just want to make sure, Mr. Paulson, any comments you want to make at the front end?
Wasn't planning on it, but in terms of the construction management contract, shared some thoughts on the contract agreement. I know those were reviewed with our attorney. Got, got an exhibit one delivered from Nicholas Associates. So given all that, I'm very comfortable with this agreement, with this partner that's been with us since the construction of this building. So I would support approving this. In terms of the playground work, I think collectively in combination with the summer work that we previously approved and the performance contracting work were below budget we targeted for next summer. So likewise, would support approving those as well.
Thank you.
Second action item.
And the only other comment that I'll make is just a reminder for the board that we're really getting to the later phases now of your, your playground, playground replacement. So you have two more summers, summer '26 and '27, and you will have replaced all playgrounds across the, the district. And additionally, just a quick reminder for board and the community that the Carol Stream Park District did get the grant, that they applied for to improve the Pleasant Hill Park as well. So that's going to come into, to the mix as well. So again, there is significant joint value for the community and those playgrounds that surround all of our buildings. We always make them community available and, and use at all times. So thank you to Dr. O'Keefe and, and the teams at the two buildings for working through that. And finally, just thank you to Weasbrooke Elementary for raising some additional funds to bring into that project as well to add some features to their playgrounds. They're going to be both beautiful playgrounds. That's it.
Any other questions or comments, board?
I have one question. What's a Gaga pit?
Gaga is, you will see it out around all of our elementary schools. So it's just a, it's a little pit that probably has maybe a foot and a half high wall and, and it's, it's sort of like a little mini sort of dodgeball-ish handball type game that you will see kids cluster around en masse at every recess.
I have a suggestion for an upcoming board meeting, Dave.
Oh, Gaga ball. Board members will not make it to the meeting if we try to play Gaga ball before.
All right, with that, I need a motion and a second to approve the facilities approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Next up, we have our policy approval consent agenda. There are 19 revised policies for approval tonight. Those are 2-105, 2-120, 4-30, 4-60, 4-170, 5-10, 5-20, 5-90, 5-120, 5-125, 5-230, 6-60, 6-135, 6-270, 7-10, 7-100, 7-180, 7-200, and 8-10. Board, are there any items board members want removed from the policy approval consent agenda?
Yes, I would request that we move 6135 accelerated placement program down to action items. And then I have just a general request. I received a couple of questions from the community about the policy numbering. And I know we've covered this before, but Dr. Schuler, could you give just a brief re-clarifying comment around how policy numbers can be interpreted?
Yep. If, if the policy ends in a five or ends in a zero, that means it is a press policy, meaning the state has a model policy. Does not mean our policy matches that model policy exactly, but there is a statewide policy, which generally means that's driven by something in school code or something in law. If it ends in a number other than zero or five, that means it's a locally developed policy that we developed on our own.
Thank you.
And Dr. Schuler, is there any other additional information you have for the board at this time on the policies on the consent agenda?
I do not. Those were all, all posted and we received no public comment on them.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Then I need a motion and a second to approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have one item on the policy action items at 6-135.
That actually has got to go down to actual actions. So it'll go at the end of the action list. It'll become action item number six.
So we do have five action items on the agenda for our first action item, approval of middle school ELA instructional materials for community review. Dr. Schuler, can you address this topic and share any additional information from staffs?
And so actually, Mrs. Murphy is just going to give you the board a little bit of context, actually both action item one and two, as they both relate to our learning acceleration works. I think anytime we're approving something that has a direct connection to your strategic plan and work plan for the year, we like to make sure we specifically call that out both for the board and the community. So, Mrs. Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Schuler. So tonight, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, there are two action items that are related to the approval of instructional materials. And with that, I thought I would give context to the board and community about the bigger picture of the work plan specifically related to learning acceleration this school year. So I just have two slides. This first one is dedicated to the work that is being done at the middle school level. And that first row is about English Language Arts or ELA. And specifically, the action item is looking for the board to approve the posting of these materials and putting them on community review. So two years ago, January 2023, we started a steering committee with middle school teachers looking at the English Language Arts curriculum in grades six through eight. And then two years later, we have completed a pilot of two instructional materials. And our middle school ELA staff unanimously are recommending that we adopt Savas's My Perspectives instructional materials for ELA. And the other part of our work plan this year that's related to English Language Arts is just getting off the ground and that is looking at our six through 12 reading interventions. And so we have a committee of 24 teachers. These are middle school and high school teachers that will begin meeting in January, looking at the reading interventions that we currently have in place, looking at best practices and research. That includes research on dyslexia and looking at what we currently offer and making recommendations to enhance the interventions that we have in place for reading. Actually, some of this work has already started. We have some of those committee members who are participating in core, in a course that is called How to Support Struggling Older Readers. So we're looking forward to them sharing what they are learning with our committee. The second work project, Mr. Chatterster is leading, he's here this evening, and that is with social studies. And so we are in year two of working with our committee of teachers, looking at the Illinois updated social study standards. Our committee has developed an instructional vision. And then they are going to move on to talking about the scope and sequence of standards and also looking at potential new instructional materials for middle school social studies. Second slide is dedicated to the work at the elementary level. And so three big projects. So first is English Language Arts. We're continuing to support the implementation of bookworms. Specifically this year, if you recall, our third, fourth and fifth grade teachers brought on what is called the ELA block. That's dedicated to writing, so they brought that on this year. And so we, Dr. Moran and I have a committee of third, fourth and fifth grade teachers we meet with on a regular basis. There's a representative from every one of our 13 schools and they provide us feedback about how we can continue to support implementation from our classroom teachers lens. We also have a partnership with Dr. Jamie Tru Daily. She's from the University of Delaware where bookworms was created. She has expertise in supporting students with special learning needs. And she has provided our staff with professional learning on both how to support students in the regular classroom with bookworms, but also with tier two and tier three interventions that are aligned to bookworms. So we're working on supporting that implementation as well this year. With math, Dr. Moran, who is here tonight, has been working with our math coaches and our interventionists in looking at math intervention programs. And so this is actually the second action item that's on your board agenda. And we're specifically asking you to approve the purchase of two sets of instructional materials for math that will, are intervention materials. These are, you know, both research-based and we're very excited about trying these out. These are numeracy consultant and bridges. And then lastly, Mrs. Hanson, who is also here tonight, she is leading the work in looking at our resource programming at the elementary level for special education. We wrapped up our special education stakeholder engagement session that we brought to the board, that information. And from there, we got good feedback. We're utilizing that and we're working with a community, a committee of teachers and administrators and looking at our resource programming.
So with that, that background, just want to give you that context for the first two items and we certainly recommend that the board move forward with action items one and two on your agenda tonight.
Board, are there any questions or comments in action items one or two?
Yeah, so my question really pertains to the process. When we stand up steering committees for the purpose of identifying materials for a pilot, I'm wondering, you know, how we choose the members of that steering committee and what their process is for nominating the pilot curriculum?
Excellent questions. So first and foremost, we work with our building principals and our building principals select the staff members that serve on the committee. So they have conversations back at their building and seek out who's interested in being a part of it. We also look for a balance of people who are in different roles. So we're looking for representation from general education, special education, multilingual learners, specialists, reading coaches, math coaches, et cetera. So that's the process of selecting committee members. In terms of making a final decision in term, between materials that we have piloted, it's a pretty extensive process that really works very well. We've done it with each of the pilot materials that we have had. So we develop a feedback form and all of our staff see that and they work together to gather that information. And then we have a day where that, the teachers come together. It has been coined by our teachers as Decision Day. And they walk through that feedback form. They have a conversation collectively as a group and they use a protocol that's called Forces For, Forces Against, to evaluate the materials. And then they actually give us feedback on a Google form. So it works very well to really have a rich conversation about the materials and get to a, a decision that we want to recommend to the board.
And so ultimately, is that feedback, I'll say democratic in nature where the, the majority opinion wins, or is it an advisory recommendation and the decision sits elsewhere?
I've been very lucky in the fact that every time I have gone through this process, it has been 80 to 90% or 100% of teachers saying they want the exact same thing. So I haven't had to have any hard conversations or navigate that in a different way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then on the action item number one, if I can get a motion and a second to approve the posting of the grades six through eight ELA instructional materials for community review as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. And for the second action item, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the K5 math intervention materials to pilot as presented. purchase of the K5 math intervention materials to pilot as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our third action item is approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable interfund loan from working cash fund to operations and maintenance fund. Dr. Schuler, can you please introduce this and share any additional information from staff?
I see Dr. O'Keefe made it up to the podium. Really, your next three items all relate to your middle school capital work. And just a reminder for the board, at your next committee of the whole meeting, we're actually going to be bringing you a more comprehensive report, just mapping out our process from now until that work is done, almost three years from now. But we need to take the first steps largely, because it's time to start paying some of the bills. And so, Dr. O'Keefe, I'll let you introduce the next couple of items.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Good to see everybody. Thank you for your support. So the next two items are conjoined. So if you recall, when you approve for posting the tentative budget in each July, there are also some resolutions associated with that, and that allows us to move money out of, or to use money specifically in O and M, transfer that money over to capital projects to pay for all of your summer capital projects. These resolutions are the same. We're required by law to go through a process. If we are moving money out of working cash, it must be moved into another operational fund first before you move it into the capital projects fund. So specifically, we are asking for up to, to move up to $6 million out of working cash into O and M. We will then move that in from O and M and the capital projects to pay your existing and ongoing bills related to anything middle school capital-wise. So Perkins and Will bills, any bills coming from consultants that are direct bill to the district. This is what we anticipate potentially at the top end needing in advance of the debt issuance and the closing of the debt issuance before we get access to that cash. So this is our bridge. This, in essence, is a bridge loan. You're using your working cash to pay your bills. And if you recall, last fall, you already approved a resolution that will allow us inside the business office prior to the fiscal year end repay you for all the money that you have spent related to middle school capital projects. That's pre-referendum and post-referendum, and that will happen prior to the end of the fiscal year. And we will use proceeds from the debt issuance to take care of that. And then the first debt issuance will take care of any ongoing bills after we have those funds available.
Board, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, and sorry if this was already answered and everything that went, the questions that were asked. So by, it works, transferring the $6 million plus dollars, where does that leave our percentage of cash on hand?
We'll be fine, because we're going to ask you to do interfund loan representation in March. Well, you've just approved one, or any of the consent agenda for O and M, but for the other funds that we'll need. So we have, we have close to $30 million in working cash as of this past month. Interest income has been tremendous this year. We're almost at budget for the whole year through December, so we've got some flexibility. And again, this turnaround, as soon as we have the cash available, technically, we have the ability to reimburse you for anything that's happened at that point, to make sure that we don't have to worry about cash concerns. But typically, when we get to the end of your working cash funding, that's in the late May timeframe, right before we get the first tax payment. We're not anticipating any operating cash issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Did you have a comment?
So we're going to vote on three and then four.
Transfer repayable interfund loan from working cash fund to operations and maintenance fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. And for our next action item, board, I need a motion in a second to approve the amended resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from operations and maintenance fund to capital projects fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. And Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please again call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item for consideration is the issuance of not to exceed $76,500,000 general obligation bonds approved by referendum at the November 5, 2024 general election, and to be issued by the district pursuant to section 19-3 of the school code for the purpose of paying certain costs of those capital projects approved by said referendum, and that the Board of Education will consider the adoption of a resolution providing for the issue of said bonds and the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest thereon. The resolution sets forth the parameters for the issuance of said bonds and sale thereof by designated officials of the district and summarize the pertinent terms of said parameters, including the specific parameters governing the manner of sale, length of maturity, rates of interest, purchase price, and tax levy for said bonds. Secretary Long, can you read the title of the resolution, please?
Resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $76,500,000 in general obligation school bonds of the district for the purpose of constructing the middle school capital projects approved at the November 5, 2024 referendum, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Any further information?
Yeah, I'm going to let Dr. O'Keefe introduce our guest this evening that's going to give you a little overview on this bond sale before you do the first issuance, so.
Dr. Schuler, thank you. So for some of you, this will be a reintroduction to Bob Lewis from PMA. PMA is your municipal advisor. Bob's been working with the district, I won't date you, but for a long time, and represented the district with the leasing obligation certificates that are attached to this building with your refinancing back in 2019, that has allowed us to be at the point that we're at today. Intimate knowledge in the municipal circuit, understands the district, understands the market. What he's going to walk through for you here in a very quick presentation is just where, little bit of education and history for the community as a whole, and then where the market is at most recently, what that might mean from a bond issuance, and some timing related to when we anticipate everything happening. So I will introduce Bob Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. O'Keefe. Well, it's great being here tonight, this building that PMA got to play a part of in financing. And, you know, people ask us what we, what I do, and we talk about public finance, you know, I always like to talk about the projects that we finance. Nobody remodels their kitchen, takes you to your den and shows you their second mortgage papers. They show you the kitchen, right? So I like to say when we do municipal bonds, we're building projects, we're not doing bonds. But I guess technically I have to do it before you can do the project. So here I am. So you've approved your referendum, and just want to give a little bit of overview on some of the terms that will be as part of the presentation. So first of all, you have municipal bonds. What are they? You know, so school districts issue bonds to finance capital projects, and other units of government do as well, but specifically, we're talking about schools here tonight. A bond is simply a promise to repay your investors, your principal and interest payments as they become due according to a fixed schedule. We call those scheduled payments your debt service. So it's very similar to what we have as individuals, as car payment or mortgage payment. Little different, there's obviously differences to them, but at the high level, they're the same thing, repaying principal and interest over time for receiving money upfront. So municipal bonds typically mature between one to 30 years from issuance. And in the case of your plan of finance, the plan is to have the, each bond sale mature no more than 15 years from issuance. Fifteen, you're able to do 15 years because with the amount that you're borrowing and with your debt payment retired, being retired soon on your current bonds, 15 years is just enough time to amortize those and still have a decline in the overall payment. So you're fortunate in the standpoint, you're able to pay them off sooner than most school districts do when they issue, or when they first have a referendum approved. Sorry, just second, I have an alarm for my medicine going off. So bond and interest levy. So when you look at a school district, your levy that you see on your tax bill just has a line, Wheaton Warrenville School 200, and it doesn't tell you the various components of that levy, though. And that levy consists of primarily your operating dollars and then a levy to pay your debt, your general obligation bond specifically. And your operating funds are separate in their use. The general obligation bond levy can only be used to pay the debt service back. And that is beneficial to you because that means, you know, if you have a rising bond payment, which you don't, that wouldn't impede your ability to pay your operating funds or operating expenses. And it's also comfortable to your bond investors, knowing that there's a separate levy that's going to repay them. Lastly, in these introductory terms, and this concept is really important for certain aspects of the remainder of the presentation, your municipal bonds are issued as being tax-exempt. What that means is the interest that you pay to your investors, they don't have to claim that interest as income on their taxes. So because they get that benefit on their tax return, they're willing to borrow the money at a lower interest, excuse me, buy your bonds, allowing you to borrow at a rate below what most entities would be able to borrow at. In this market environment, tax exemption probably saves you 1% to 1.25% over the, if you weren't able to issue as tax exempt. But that comes with some rules tied to it, which we're going to cover some of those rules in the presentation. Before we do that, however, just a review of one of the important elements in this, that comes from the school code is the calculation of your legal debt margin. Think of this like your credit card limit that we have as individuals. Your credit card limit is loosely tied to what your income is, your wealth. Well, the same thing with your legal debt margin, it's tied to the property values of the district. You know, for you, you're, you have very strong property values, your equalized assessed value, if you look at that first column of numbers, is $3.6 billion. School code says you multiply that by 13.8%, subtract the amount of principal outstanding. So as of the end of the last fiscal year, your legal debt margin was 460 million. Today, that would stand at 501 million, and then, you know, as you would pay your bonds off, that you currently have outstanding, it'll rise to about 525 million. So the point being is, you have plenty of capacity to issue these referendum bonds. It doesn't mean you can go out and sell 525 million dollars. You have to have the authority from the voters to do so. School code was recently amended to provide an exemption to school districts if they are having to issue with their legal debt margin after they conducted a hearing and such. Because you have so much room within your legal debt margin, you don't really need to take advantage of that exception. Next, credit ratings, scores, and definitions. So as individuals, we all have credit scores from the various credit agencies. The better your credit score, the lower your interest rate when you go to borrow for a car, for a home. Similar concept applies to you as a school district. There's four different rating agencies. The primary rating agencies that we utilize for local units of government are Moody's and S&amp;P. The other two are primarily used by the larger issuers as well, City of Chicago, State of Illinois, for example. Your credit rating is a double A+, which is the second highest credit rating offered by Standard and Poor's. So it's a very strong credit rating, which will lead to a really attractive interest rate when you go to borrow. I'm off, I'm always, the question always asked by every double A+ is, how do we get to triple A, or why are we not triple A? And, you know, you check a lot of the boxes to be the triple A, and the wealth levels of Wheaton are certainly strong wealth levels, but they're not as high as you might see at Highland Park or Hinsdale or places like that. Now, I do, that said, I do have some communities that have similar wealth levels that might have a triple A rating, but compensating that are much higher fund balance levels. You have good fund balances, but you guys are very prudent at just maintaining what you need. Whatever else you don't need, you put towards capital, which is a good practice. If you built them up and continue to build them up, maybe get triple A, but I think that's a little bit of the tail wagging the dog, you know, trying to get a triple A by just retaining fund balances. Now, the city is triple A, which sometimes I'm asked, well, why is the school and the city different? You know, schools are seen as having some more flexibility, more power as being a home role entity, which oft, sometimes you see a city and a school district at the same level, but some, oftentimes are split because of the additional authority that a city has.
The difference between triple A and double A+ in this environment is what in terms of an interest rate on a 15-year bond?
Yeah, it would probably be depending on the day that you would sell, .05 to .1%. So it's not, I mean, we multiply it over millions of dollars, but you know, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not, it's not a lot. So, okay, what are the immediate steps after election? What happens? And these steps have, some of these steps have already occurred. You know, the county had 21 days to canvass the election, certify the results. That happened on November 26th or before. And it's at that point that you, the referendum officially passed. After that time, there's a 30-day petition period if anyone wanted to challenge the results of the, or the referendum. That really only comes into play for very, very close outcomes. Yours was not close, so that was an issue that had to be managed. And then once it's approved, you have up to five years to sell the referendum bonds. Most, most entities don't take the full five years. Occasionally, you know, if somebody's doing a large, large-scale project, it might take them the full five years to utilize that authority as they're managing all the construction they're doing. That's not the plan here. Typically, the bonds are issued in more than one series. Some of the reasons for that will be addressed on the subsequent slides. It's not often, especially for a very large referendum like you guys have, that all the bonds are sold at one time. So what are the continuation of the next steps? What you have on the agenda for consideration tonight is approval of a parameters resolution. And the parameters resolution was actually described very well when you guys introduced the resolution. You know, it contains a lot of parameters, such as the maximum amount to borrow, maximum repayment term, maximum interest rate. It also names the delegates to approve the sale, because you're passing this resolution, and you're giving the authority, not to me to approve the sale, to delegates of the board to approve the sale. The delegates are the assistant superintendent of business operations, the superintendent, the board president, and the vice president. And then you typically have one elected and one administrative official sign off. You name four, just in case schedules are such that someone's not available. The authorization for this resolution, if bonds are not sold, which intends they would be sold before the expiration, but the expiration, and this isn't in law, this is the opinion of bond counsel, but that expiration would need to occur six months after passage or to board election, whichever happens first. So if you were not to sell these bonds, it would be at the seating of the board after the election, the authority would expire. How are the bonds to be sold? How will the interest rate be determined? The recommendation from PMA, which is consistent with the guidelines from the Illinois Government Finance Officers Association, is to sell it via competitive sale. The next slide will show you a sample result from competitive sale. After that sale, the resolution and a notification of sale filed with the county, and then the county uses those documents to establish a levy. So unlike the operating levy, which annually you vote on that, you file it no later than the last Tuesday of December, the county files the bond levy based off the documents that are filed right after the bonds are sold, unless you tell them something different, which you have the last couple of years. You've done some abatements and reduced the payment sum, and you've told the county, don't levy the full amount, we're going to cover some of this with dollars we already have. So this slide shows you a sample of a competitive sale. And so the way the competitive sale works is we prepare the documentation called official statement. We go through the rating process to get your rating updated and confirmed. And then on a date and time, we accept bids on behalf of the district, and underwriters from across the country will submit bids. Here's an example of one we did around May or June of last year for Hinsdale 181 for their debt certificates. You know, they had over 10 bids on it, and the winner is one with the lowest true interest cost. You see TD Securities won with a 3.42, and then you can see everyone else who came in after them. That true interest cost, which we call TIC, is a composition of the interest rates they're proposing, as well as the fee that they want to earn as underwriters. So it's all that that's baked into that computation. Then once they're awarded the bid, they will then resell your bonds to their investor clientele, which could be various mutual funds, casualty insurance companies, banks, trust funds, individuals they could sell it to. Okay, so now we have to turn our attention back to the tax law bit here, and this gets into why. And this gets into why sometimes bonds are sold in more than one series. Is in order to be tax exempt, you have to meet these three tests. And the first test is the one that we're always most focused on. The other two generally follow if you're going to meet the first one. So the first test is that you have to reasonable expectation to spend 85% of what you borrow within the first three years. Because, keep in mind, when you sell a tax exempt bond and people invest in a tax exempt bond, the IRS is losing tax income from the sale of those bonds. So these rules are meant to limit the amount of tax exempt bonds that are outstanding in order to limit the amount of tax revenue that the federal government loses. So if you can't meet a certified at the time of sale that you reasonably expect to spend 85% in three years, well, then we would need to downsize that bond sale so you can meet that expectation. Now, notice I've said meet the expectation a handful of times. Doesn't mean that you get to the third year and you're only at 75%. You are now on hot water with the IRS. Because things happen. Things slow down, the projects run into environmental issues, you have to have changes in the project. I've seen a gamut of reasons over the years why projects slow down. You just would need to document those reasons, have them in the file in the event the IRS ever decide to audit your bond issue. And they do audit bond issues just like they audit us as individuals. Usually I hear about one or so a year that get audited from people that we've worked with. Maybe not, that may even be too frequent. So it's, I wouldn't go into this expecting to get audited, but if you want to make sure that you do everything and document things, just like we do as individuals in the event that you are. The next one is the time test, that within six months, you've entered into an agreement, a binding agreement to spend 5%, at least 5% of the proceeds. Now, it doesn't mean you have to have spent 5% within six months, you just have to be in agreement. Typically, the agreement you have with the architect will usually satisfy most of that. In your case, you actually will be reimbursing yourself, that counts towards the 5%, so you will easily meet this test. And the last one is the due diligence test. For this is, this is the one for folks who like to, who would borrow the money, do nothing for two years, and then just spin it really quickly in that final year and meet the 85%, but then sat on it for two years. And in that case, the IRS, their audit, you was like, well, why'd you borrow this money and didn't do anything for two years? Why'd you borrow as soon as you did? I was just, I just got an email from a client today who's still sitting on money they borrowed from 2021. It's because they have a project that is requiring people to sell their property in order to do the project, and they're still running into problems with that. So here we are in 2025 and they still haven't spent the money. Those things happen. That's not going to happen to you guys because you're remodeling your middle schools, you don't have to acquire property. Okay, so those are some IRS rules we have to follow. The next one is arbitrage. Now, if you were on the board when we did the lease certificate financing for this building, you probably are thinking, I don't remember him ever talking about arbitrage then. Well, it's because that was a different interest rate environment. At that point in time, short-term interest rates were so low, you earned very little interest income on the proceeds of the bonds, so we weren't concerned about arbitrage. It didn't need to be a topic of conversation. And so basically, in layman's terms, arbitrage is earning investment income at a rate above the rate that you borrow that. So if you borrowed at four and invest at four and a half percent, the half a percent difference is positive arbitrage. Generally, the US tax code prohibits you from keeping the positive arbitrage that you earn unless you meet an exception. Now, before I even start covering these exceptions, I want to say that earning positive arbitrage and having to cut a check to the IRS for that positive arbitrage is not the worst thing in the world. Because it meant you earned every penny that you were permitted to earn on your project. You didn't leave any potential investment income on the table. And, and that happens. We've had clients in recent years that had to cut some checks to the IRS, but that meant they earned everything that they could. But before I go through some of those exceptions, I just want to give you a diagram of just conceptually what positive arbitrage is. So the green line represents the 10-year muni bond rate. So it's meant to be a proxy of what you might borrow at. You probably would borrow at above that rate because this is an index of state-level triple A bonds, which generally get the best interest rates. And then the two-year treasury is meant to be a proxy for the borrowing, or the investment rate. So whenever the blue line is above the green line, that's a period of positive arbitrage. So you see that gray area then above zero. So we've had some pockets of time over the last 20 years. The first time was just before the great recession hit. That was when the Federal Reserve was really trying to fight the housing market that was out of control, which we all know didn't work. And then we had a little bit just before COVID hit. And then COVID hit, we went to a period of negative arbitrage again. And then more recently, we've had, because of the fight against inflation, we've had a significant amount of positive arbitrage that's potentially available. And will this continue throughout the term of the next three years as you're selling bonds? You know, that just depends on Federal Reserve policy because as they cut rates, the rates that they're cutting have the most influence over the short-term rates. Your borrowing rate, which is more of a medium-term rate, influenced by the Fed, but not so much as your short-term investment rates. So what are the exceptions? Because, you know, if, hey, if you earn some positive arbitrage, we'd like you to be able to keep it, right? That's more money that you can put towards a project. Well, the first one is, it's hard to meet for somebody with a project as big as yours. If you're a school district, if you sell $15 million of tax exempt bonds in a single calendar year, that, then you'd be exempt from paying back any arbitrage. Well, you passed 140-some million, right? So it's, unless you want to spread this out over many, many years, it's going to be hard to utilize that exemption a lot. So then what are the other exceptions? Well, the six months, you spend all the money in six months, hey, you can keep your positive arbitrage. Well, that's not going to happen either. Next one, 18-month exception, and that one really doesn't apply to your situation. That applies to schools that are using their bonds to also purchase land as part of the proceeds. When you buy land, that gives you a, you're forced into a shorter time horizon. Well, you're not buying any land, so then you would qualify, potentially qualify for a 20-month, 24-month construction exception. And you'll see that, what the goals are then is to sell, or spend 10% within six months, 45, 75 and 100% by 24 months. And if you met all those, any positive arbitrage you earned, you'd be able to keep. If you miss one of them, if you miss the second one, you can't catch up. You, you, you've, you would have to pay back any positive arbitrage that you earned. And one of the strategies to do is to be monitoring these very carefully so that, hey, if you get close to one of these milestones and you're, you need the architect to send you an invoice or somebody send you an invoice so you can pay it, that we can keep your positive arbitrage. It's the type of strategies that you want to make sure that you're trying to employ. Now, when you're authorizing this bond sale tonight, if the board goes ahead to approve the resolution, you know, we have a not-to-exceed mountain there. We're still awaiting to get some more fine-tuned information, how you might spend these proceeds. So it's a chance that we could change that amount trying to hit these spin-down requirements. So more, it's still several weeks before you'd sell the bonds, so we have time to get that information and try to fine-tune things to see if it's possible to even hit this in the event that you would be able to retain positive arbitrage. Okay.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So 24 months starts when we sell the bonds?
The day that you close.
Okay, so for that, for us, that's approximately March?
Yeah, the target closing date, April, or excuse me, March 25th. And, and the reimbursement that you do immediately goes towards that 10%.
And so the 100% in 24 months, so March 2027, would be the date for this bond sale?
Correct.
Second one would, which is going to be later, of course, would move that 24 months back.
Yeah, yeah, each one's done independent from the other.
That doesn't seem unachievable for us.
Yeah, likely not. So when we, but we'll be able to confirm it to get, we don't want to borrow 76 and a half and find out, ooh, we should have only borrowed 73. You know, but we also want to make sure that we're meeting your, your needs and timing for construction. We don't want to sell four bond sales trying to do that. It's a little bit of a cat, or the tail wagging the dog, if you will. Because by trying to keep it to two bond sales, you're minimizing the cost of issuance versus, you know, trying to hit these spin downs if it means doing three or four bond sales.
So can I ask a basic question? And I think you alluded to it here. My initial thought was why would we sell bonds without a bill that we needed to pay in hand? But is it because the fees that are incurred at the sale? Like, how do we balance that?
Yeah, you, you mean, why are you not obtaining the funding right when you had the bill?
Correct.
Yeah, because the, well, one, when you, in this type of interest rate environment, you're better off borrowing the money and then earning and investing it and trying to earn positive arbitrage because you actually then make money off of borrowing it sooner.
Potentially, yes.
Yes. And secondly, the, you know, that would require a, some sort of line of credit and that is not something that is sold in the municipal bond market. You could enter into something like that with a bank, but banks' interest rates are not as attractive as the, the public market at this point in time. Plus, when you set up like some sort of line of credit to draw on it as you would, you, you pay on the portion that you wouldn't have even drawn on yet. So if they set a line of credit and, say it's $75 million, you would be paying interest as soon as you borrowed on the $75 million. And that, but the portion, but they have to have that there so you could draw at any time. So they're charging you a percentage on the portions you haven't drawn yet. So you have to overcome that as well.
Angela, I think one other thing too, if I understand the question, we're not just getting one bill for the entire project. Like, once it starts, right, the bills are going to come in monthly, right, as were.
And each draw would incur costs because the bond council would issue an opinion at each draw.
I think is the answer to the question I was asking. So, so what are those? So each time we issue and draw, what are the fees incurred? So, so that's what would keep us from not just waiting to sell bonds until we had a bill to pay, correct? Like an issuance.
Yeah, you would not want to issue bonds on a monthly basis. It would be, definitely be cost prohibitive. And you would, you would, in this interest rate environment, you would lose money from the potential of the investment earnings that you would have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask a?
Just one, one quick point to that, too. We, from an auditing perspective, need to make sure that you were reimbursed prior to the end of fiscal year end. If we were to wait to sell bonds in July, when let's say we have our first major draw coming from Nicholas and Associates, those proceeds could not be brought back from an audit perspective into this current fiscal year, which means you would have a significant drag on your overall fund balance percentage that would be harmful to you and potentially puts you in a category that we want to want to be in, where you either didn't meet board policy or it was a reflection on your recognition, your financial status recognition. So this allows us to pay bills as they're going. I already have the first bill from Perkins and Will from November. It's $800,000 for their services just in the month of November alone. Add December, January, February, March, those are all timeframes prior to the proceeds. Plus, you have more than a million dollars you've already spent. In advance of that, we want to make sure that we can, at the same time, because our investment strategy might be a little bit different on the bonds than what our daily investment strategy is. So if you have those funds, we internally can reimburse you sooner and then find ways to maximize those dollars from your own dollar perspective, from the board's perspective, not just the bond sale perspective.
Okay, that's very helpful, two things to add or to ask. So if we were to move into a, a non-positive arbitrage environment, the thought of, and I understand we have to pay back, reimburse what we have, the thought of you having a client or us becoming a client that has money sitting around for a couple of years that we're paying interest on, that's, that's the, that's the driving force of my question, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, there's, the, the type of financing mechanism you're talking about using is very seldom utilized by anybody because it's just not as cost-effective. They would be issued by a bank. Banks right now are not as attractive as the public market because their marginal tax rate's only 21%. So they don't benefit as much from tax exemption as other entities who buy municipal bonds who have higher marginal tax rates, who benefit more from tax exemption so they get a lower interest rate. And then there's the cost to maintain that line of credit when you're not using it, adds to it, in addition to the additional cost of issuance that it ties into. It's just, I understand the concept. And what was typically done in periods of negative arbitrage is you would perhaps consider doing more bond sales instead. And, you know, the other thing is a lot of times those lines of credit you're talking about are variable rate. You know, they're going to be tied to a percentage over some sort of variable rate, so your rate's not fixed over time. You know, so it becomes more problematic when you have a bond that's paid from a levy that has a variable interest rate because you have to set the levy to collect the taxes without necessarily, not necessarily knowing what the interest is you're going to be able to pay. You know, so.
That's a good point. And I know the answer to this question, but I just feel like I want to ask it anyway. So the reimbursement that we're doing, so I think you said that the debt service can only be used to, or that on the tax bill, what comes in as debt service can only be used to pay back debt service, but it's okay to, to reimburse for something that isn't debt service?
Yeah, the proceeds of the bond sale that you receive when you sell, those, a portion of those proceeds will be used to reimburse yourself. The levy that comes in will be used to pay the principal and interest that you owe to your investors on the bonds. And, and to re, and to reimburse yourself, you had to have previously declared your intent to do so. And which is something as you was pointing out, you've already done, which enables you to do that, which is good thinking on your part to be proactive in doing that because a lot of times people don't do that and they end up having to sell a portion of the bonds as taxable to reimburse themselves. So this kudos to you guys for having that foresight.
Kudos, Dr. Okey. Thank you.
Just one last point, too. I would be highly surprised if this first issuance is not spent in 24 months based on what we're looking at from a phasing plan of construction. These bonds proceeds will take care of phase one and phase two. It will start phase three, but we'll need phase three money probably April or May of next year, not the year after. So it's quite possible that first issuance becomes March of this year and that your second issuance is not '27, it's going to occur in '26 because it appears that the summer of '26 very well could be your heaviest construction summer, where we need additional proceeds.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So one, one last clarifying question, if you go back down to the 24-month. To me, I, I think the, the one bull point that would trip us up is the 45% in 12 months, that's March of 2026. So spending $34 million basically through one summer and some of, some construction over the, during the school year might be a little bit of a challenge. My question is, is spend, what does that mean? Does that mean where we've paid Nicholas based on a payment request from the contractor? Or is it where the board has approved a contract with two committed, when the actual payment's made?
Yeah, when the payment's made, the wire's sent, the check's cut, yeah.
So that, I think that 45% in 12 months is the one that's probably, because the second, the third one, 18 months gets us through the second summer of construction?
Yeah, I think Brad, remember, there's the one caveat, and I think this will become clear when the, the board sees this at the next committee, the whole, your issuance number two is going to launch all of the new addition pieces as well, and that's going to happen pre-summer of '26. So you are going to have a couple of big new addition elements that are going to get going in the interim.
Right, so that, that work would start probably this late summer, early fall?
Yes.
And you may know this better than I would too, Mr. Paulson, is that, you know, some of, you may be able to pre-buy some of the equipment that you need for it and then have that on hand. You know, those purchases would then, you know, be part of that 45%. If you're getting close to that, you know, that's some things, strategies you can employ.
And as you said, it's not bad. It's because we're making more on the investment based on the rates in the marketplace than what we're paying for at this, at the bond sale.
I have a question on the arbitrage calculation. Is it the absolute dollars earned on interest and spent on interest? You know, or is it the delta in percentage, right? Because we could earn a bunch on the front end and then we.
Yeah, it's a present value calculation, so you, yeah, yeah, if you have positive arbitrage at the beginning, and let's say, because usually what hap, what you want to do is you sell the bonds, proceeds come into your account, and that you use that draw schedule to go out and strategically buy bank CDs and agency and treasury securities to lock in those yields. to lock in those yields, but you're not going to be able to lock in all 100%. Something you can leave liquid because you just need to manage uncertainties in your cash flow.
Sure.
Was, it's possible that liquid portion, then, you might have positive arbitrage at the beginning, but that liquid portion goes down in yield over time, and that, so you might have some negative arbitrage that had to be in that would offset some of the positive arbitrage at the beginning. You know, that's a possibility. It's just that, you know, it's really going to depend upon Federal Reserve policy and how it unfolds.
Yeah, but so it's the dollars, though, over the period of time, not, you know, we were positive for six months?
Yes, it's cumulative.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, all very good questions tonight. Thank you for them. So just, this part's review, this should be old information at this point because it's part of the referendum campaign, but just to recap, your, levy of year '22 is for taxes collected in 2023. That was your peak year of debt service, I believe, just under 20, it could have been the year before, too. But you're, but it's definitely the peak in this horizon we're looking at. You're just under $20 million. And then the last two years, levy of year '23, collected in '24, and then '24 for taxes collected next year, which would be your final payment on your outstanding bonds. That would be just below $15 million, which is now some of those abatements that you did. And then new bonds would be layered in, as you see here, with neither, neither series being more than 15 years individually, at a payment that is set to be lower than what you have, will have levied the last couple of years. That's still the objective, and it, you know, that's what we intend to do as the bonds are sold. So this slide is summary of the financing options to compare what the information was during the referendum campaign, to put together what was shared with the public, and then what we as, know as of now with this January 9th update. So it was always planned to do two sales. The estimated debt service at the time the presentation was put together for the referendum campaign was estimated just under $210 million, with the average annual payment $12.3 million. The bond interest tax rate would fall by about five and a half cents, which would have been about $71 straight from median home value. When we updated this on January 9th, the estimated debt service was about $4.5 million lower. The impact to the taxpayers was about $79 decline. Now, this is all going to continue to change until the bonds are sold. Obviously, once you sell the first bond sale, that eliminates some of the risk because that will be locked in. Those are fixed-rate bonds, and then you'll continue to have some risk on the second sale until they're sold. But, you know, I'm oftentimes asked, what are interest rates going to be? The standard answer from people in my profession is, if I knew the answer to that, I wouldn't be presenting to you, I'd be somewhere else very rich. But that said, there's a lot of uncertainty going into this year, you know, with the, not knowing the impact, what higher tariffs might be, what we'll have tariffs on because that's going to raise some of the prices, what we may pay for that could reignite inflation a bit, which is why the Federal Reserve came out in December, so they're going to slow down the pace of reducing interest rates. So unfortunately, we've seen rates climb over the last few days here. I think there's just some overall nervousness, I think, as policy, you know, markets hate uncertainty. So the hope is, regardless of what the policy changes are, that as they become known, that, you know, interest rates will hopefully start trending back downward from where we stand today. But I would not expect significantly higher interest rates, I would not expect significantly lower interest rates than what we're currently estimating, estimating that, barring some substantial change that none of us can foresee at this moment. So the key steps, last slide of the presentation here, is the board has for consideration to approve this resolution. The target date is sell the bonds March 3rd. It's not set in stone. You know, if things are not good that day in the sale, that's one of the nice things about the parameters resolution, we can always postpone the sale to a different date. And, you know, we targeted that date. We always try to steer away from major economic reports like job reports, CPI, Fed meetings, and March 3rd is before the CPI report of March, before the Fed meets, that, I believe they meet in March this year. So, you know, that date is chosen strategically, you know, for those reasons, is trying to steer away from major economic reports. And then the bonds will close on approximately March 25th, and the plan then is to come back to the board with a recap of the bond sale on April 9th. During this whole process, we'll be drafting the official statement, putting together a rating presentation that will work with the administration to provide to standard emporers. And that's pretty much the synopsis then of the timeline. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one. Doesn't appear that any refunding provisions are part of the parameters. Is that just, is there a market standard with what refunding provisions look like?
Yeah, they're in there, they're probably in, it's called an optional redemption section. And we, in there right now, it sets a maximum not-to-exceed date. It's usually about 10 years after you sell. Since yours is a 15-year financing, I would probably, if today's market put an eight- or nine-year call on it, if you were doing a 20-year financing, I'd probably be more apt to do a nine-to-10-year call on the bond. So, yeah, then you'd be able to refinance them after that period of time has lapsed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the, you know, so the board election, I think, is April 1st? So if, is it, is the date April 1st or is it when it's certified?
It's when the new board is seated. So you'll be certified like on the 22nd, but most boards aren't seated until the end of that April or maybe the beginning of May.
Okay. So if March 25th slipped by 10 days because of...
Right.
Something, we'd be okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, we...
And even if we weren't, we just have to repeat what we're doing tonight.
Exactly. It's not the end of the world.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Then, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution providing for the issuance of not-to-exceed $76,500,000 in general obligation school bonds of the district for the purpose of constructing the middle school projects approved at the November 5th, 2024 referendum, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Blattner?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
And last action item is approval of Policy 6-135. Mr. Jerpy, do you want to start off?
Yes, the reason I wanted this moved out, I'm just looking for some additional clarification in light of some community and educator feedback and questions. So my understanding of this policy change is that it's driven by legislative change back from spring of 2021 that essentially says that if a student achieves a certain proficiency level on state testing, that we will automatically suggest placing them in a higher level of coursework. The concern or question that was conveyed to me is, you know, do we have a risk in doing so that while a student may test well, that they are not adequately prepared for that coursework and thus underperform, creating challenges for both themselves and the educators? I was just hoping, Dr. Shulley, you could kind of shed a little bit of light on, is my conceptual understanding correct? What are the pros, cons, and what's our path forward?
Yeah, so, yes, your conceptual understanding is correct. I think this law was passed because if you conceptually flip that, right, there's a risk without accelerated placement, that you have students that potentially should be in a more accelerated course of study and yet are not being given the opportunity, if not recognized through the other means that school districts have usually used to place students. So I think it was a law that was put in, in place to recognize the fact that, that certainly, I think even in our pathways that we develop for students, we recognize accelerated level classes as good for kids, obviously, in their pathway. Thus, we want every student who can be successful to, to have that, that opportunity. So I think the concern is a valid concern. I think when we talked about it with the HR Policy Committee, certainly, one of the things that we want to do even with that committee as we get into the beginning of 2025 is actually look at the data from the first semester at the high school and, and look at students because we had a notable shift in students that are accessing A-level classes this year prior to the, the passage of that. But we want to make sure we understand what is shifting at semester. There are some students that are shifting classes at semester, perhaps that were, were overplaced in a class, that they're not being successful. Kind of look at, at that, that data point to see if there are some adjustments that we make. I tend to lean on, when possible, I'd like to get kids into the opportunity, but make sure we've got good procedures that, that help us to identify perhaps a, a situation where students are not going to be successful. So I, I think that, that is the, the concept. I think there were some other options that the Policy Committee could have looked at that would have delayed implementation of this, but I, I would, would prefer to lean on keeping the practice in place, but seeing where perhaps we need to make some adjustment in practice if necessary. If we have to rethink that, Policy Committee can always come back to this policy if that's something that we want to rethink in the future.
And then with the law saying shall allow for the accelerated placement, not must, I assume we provide some sort of process for the students or the students' parents if they disagree with that accelerated placement to downgrade?
Yep, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only other thing I wanted to add is, we highlighted this at the last meeting, but on our website, we do have the revised sort of setup to make it easier if people do have public comments. So who's ever providing that public comment, I would encourage them to go through that pathway so that in advance of the meeting, we can get them that feedback or explanation if it's helpful. All right, with that said, if I could please have a motion and a second to approve Policy 6-135 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blattner?
Yes.
Mr. Long? Yes.
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is reports from board members. Board, are there any other reports from board members? I have one. I had a virtual school visit with one of my adopted schools, Pleasant Hill, that I had, in the fall, taken a day off of work to try and hit all of my adopted schools and had a scheduling conflict where I couldn't do Pleasant Hill. And so I just wanted to report on that because I know with schedules, sometimes it's hard to get out to our adopted schools. And so the option of a virtual visit worked well and had a good conversation with principal client over there. Next, we have three written reports provided to the board that are in the pack, the monthly financial reports, the FOIA report, and board communication log. There are two topics for future discussion, five-year financial projections, middle school capital projects. Are there any other topics board members want considered for future discussion?
I just wanted to kind of collectively remind us, I still think we have an open item from our board self-improvement session with regard to how we capture these sorts of future discussion items, so just don't want to lose sight of that.
I think we do have a document, excuse me, a document that tracks them now, but...
Yeah, we, we developed a strategy, was something I shared with Rob and Julie, and I think that we're looking at, I think we want to just make sure it's a process. But we have, we have been capturing them, for sure, at least at our level. I don't think we've made that process like fully open and transparent to the, to the board, but we've been capturing them.
And then one thing that just came up in the pre-meeting questions, perhaps looking at discussion at a future COW committee of the whole meeting regarding practices and interventions in place for students with dyslexia.
I was going to suggest that, too, based on some of the comments from Melissa's presentation, that I know that's in the work plans, and we've talked about it at different presentations of some of the work doing, we're doing with reading challenges, but I think a session where we can kind of put that all together would, would be useful.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right, our next regular board meeting will be on February 12th, 2025, 7:00 at Washington Elementary School. The next committee of the whole will be on January 22nd, 7:00 at the School Service Center. And the next coffee with the board will be on February 8th, 2025, at 9:00 AM, also at the School Service Center. There are no further action to come before the board an open session. All I need is a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.